Thank you. I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting on September 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilman Werner.
Here.
Councilwoman Gleason.
President.
Councilwoman Leonard.
President.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
President.
Mayor O'Connor.
President.
We have a forum.
Please stand and join me for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the very glorious citizens of our nation under God in the mistletoe with liberty and justice for all.
You?
Okay.
Do we have additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Langowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call. Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The, uh, this section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should have been completed and returned to the city clerk. When you are called to speak, please go to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All public comments will be noted and may receive a response. If necessary, any follow-up will be handled by staff. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, um, PBSO is, the sergeant that's going to present is on duty, so if we could run him now instead of at the end of the meeting, that would be appreciated, sir.
Absolutely. If we could, uh, bring you up for the staff report, that'd be great.
Good afternoon. I'm Sergeant Tahada with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. I'm assigned to the western community and currently your supervisor here at the city of Westlake.
Thank you for being here, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to present the crime stats today. Uh, reviewing the crime stats, I can see that, uh, crime is non-existent right now here in Westlake. That's a good thing. Um, also looking at the traffic, um, it's been, traffic enforcement has been up 51%. We have an increase, uh, of visibility and deputies in the area that are conducting proactive, uh, police work and traffic enforcement, traffic stops, uh, red lights, and also working crash, crashes.
Do you have, do you have the data there for how many, uh, how many stops, how many warnings, how many?
Yes, sir.
Mind spitting that out so I can take some notes?
Sir, I'm sorry.
Possible?
Yeah, let me, uh, let me review the traffic stops for the month. We have 529.
529 stops?
Correct.
And how many, uh?
Tickets.
How many citations versus how many warnings?
That I don't have, but I can take a note and get back to you on, on how many are citations, how many are warnings, how many are verbal.
That would be great. And then, uh, what about calls for service? You have that data? You didn't think I was gonna ask you all that?
Uh, what else?
Calls for service would help. Uh, self-initiated calls for service.
So what we have listed here is, again, for crimes, um, no homicides, no robberies, sexual assaults, shootings, stabbings. Uh, when it pertains to the amount of calls, I don't have that, but-
So you have none of those?
No, none of those.
Okay.
Okay. Um, looking at burglaries also, um-
Any construction thefts this month?
Twelve.
Twelve construction thefts. And is that up or down?
Well, this is gonna be from August 25th to, um, yeah, it's gonna be for the month.
So twelve. Does it say if that's up or down from last month? I believe it's gonna be up.
It's shown that it's down.
Last month?
Yes.
Okay, that's interesting.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I had a comment, conversation with Captain Sant the other day, and one of the things that they're doing now is, um, some of what were counted as a trav, as a construction theft is actually the construction supervisors moving materials from one house to the other. So now what they're doing is they're, they're double-checking that and finding it before they call it in as a report of a theft. So that's why also, uh, they've gone down. So PBSO is working diligently with the construction and development crews to make sure that the materials is not really stolen. It's not-
I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get acclimated to the actual data, my data. Up, down, even?
Yeah, so you had 22 and now it's down to 12.
22 last month.
Yes. That was year-to-date. I apologize. Not a month. It's looking from January 1st, January, I apologize, January 1st-
Makes sense.
To, uh, the beginning of last month and then the ending of this month. So you're down.
So what did we have?
It was 22.
That was year-to-date's 22.
Year-to-date, but this date is, um, looking at August 31st. No, that was, uh, July 31st. And then today, uh, you only have 12.
Twelve total.
For the month?
We don't know what it was specifically for the month of-
No, you, yes, yes.
How many?
Yeah.
For the month of August?
Yes.
Twelve?
Yes.
So the 22 was for eight, seven months.
Got it.
It's saying it's down 10%.
All right, great. What else you got for us?
Uh, to a vehicle, it was three, uh, that went out.
That specifically for this month?
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, everything else is down.
Down to nonexistent or down-
Non-existent. Basically, crime is non-existent, but you have a few burglaries and-
Well, I can read burglaries, doesn't mean it's non-existent, but I certainly appreciate, uh, everything you guys are doing to keep it, to keep it low.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could just follow up with, with all of us or get it to the clerk and she'll disseminate it to us, the, the actual stats.
Yes, sir.
You know, the stops, the warnings, tickets, and so on and so forth. I would really, really appreciate-
Yeah, we'll definitely get those numbers for you.
Thanks.
One question around the burglaries.
Yes, sir.
Does the sheriff's department find the perpetrators?
We always do. We always bring out resources. We get the canines, get the eagles out, we do a perimeter, and we usually find someone. But like you said, the, uh, construction burglaries is something that needs to be, um, clarified because sometimes it gets classified to a construction, uh, burglary to a construction, but it's not actually a burglar.
No, I understand that.
It's missing or misplaced equipment.
You referred to three autos.
You told us three burglaries.
Vehicle burglaries.
Yeah.
That's what I'm wondering.
Do we know the result of those?
No, sir, I don't.
People apprehended or they're charged?
Not yet. Sometimes this vehicle's left unlocked and by the time that we respond, they're, they're gone. So we do follow-ups. Detectives get assigned and they do follow-ups and they, and they follow up on these-
But do we, we, do we know the outcomes of those?
Uh, at this point, I don't have that information.
Throw that in the, throw that in the email.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can?
Please.
Yeah.
I, I just want to remind the council, I've said this in the past, uh, the month that we just passed through, school was still out.
Yep.
Unlocked cars, teenagers. It all plays a role.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, um, I, I would go on a limb and say that those will probably not be a consistent number throughout the school year. Um, so you might, you might see them drawn.
Great.
Well, that'd be nice. I look forward to it.
Yeah, we went up on concession encounters, specifically with the juvenile. We had, uh, 50, 52.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, just making concession encounters with people that are, you know, either suspected of doing-
Okay.
Uh, something, you know, illegal or that it, it needs to be addressed for the safety of the, the citizens. So we had contact and we always document these by completing a filled interview report.
Well, thank you so much for everything you do. You have anything else for us, or?
I want to also just mention that you guys are adding a traffic car to the, uh, to the city. Uh, that deputy, we're working on filling that spot and he will be starting October 1st.
Excellent.
All right, which is gonna be more for police presence and, and, um, addressing some of the traffic concerns that you guys have here, specifically Town Center and Crescent.
You guys have a vehicle that's gonna be marked City of Westlake?
It should be, sir, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Sergeant. My understanding, it's gonna be an unmarked vehicle. Were you the captain last week?
Yeah.
Don't mark the city of Westlake.
I don't wanna, but I also heard that he, that person could have also a marked, an unmarked vehicle, which also helps. It helps.
Great.
For certain days where you want to have high visibility and other days where you have landmarks. So that's just another tool that we can utilize to enforce traffic.
Don't want to burn that unmarked.
No, we don't.
Sergeant Tahada, thank you so much for-
Thank you.
-what you guys do. I really so appreciate you.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
I, I don't want Chief Romero to get jealous, so I'm gonna let her come up and, and do hers. We gotta keep it fair. And that way, uh-
Run as.
It can jet to the family too.
How is everybody?
We're well, we're well.
Been a while, I feel. I zoomed into the last month's meeting, but it was because we had the unified command post at Station 28, so I didn't leave that, but I did attend. And so I'll be sad to see your city manager leave. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm gonna give report for July also.
Great.
Um, because I missed that meeting. Um, so the total, uh, emergency responses to the city of Westlake in July were 75, and the average dispatch handling time was 43 seconds. The average turnout time was 43 seconds. Average travel time was four minutes and 48 seconds for an average total response time of six minutes and 15 seconds. So that was for July. So the call volume was up a bit in July as opposed to August, and maybe because, it could have been because the additional traffic and everything with the road closure. Um, there was 55 emergency calls in the city of Westlake in August, and, uh, dispatch handling time 42 seconds, average turnout time 49 seconds, average travel time four minutes and 14 seconds for a total average response time of five minutes and 44 seconds.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody have any questions?
I'm good. You guys have any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have those reports?
Yeah.
Yep. I appreciate you.
You're the best.
Thank you.
Can you hand those over to the city manager so we can all-
They're in the pack.
Your package.
Bring it packing. You have a copy.
I'm glad you're in line.
Good. They're in there. Usually part of the agenda.
I know, but you don't.
We'll, we'll make sure everybody gets them. They're not in your package.
Any other public comment? Not the pledge?
Yes, Mayor, we have a public comment card from Ms. Anita Kaplan.
Can I refer until later?
Sure. You'll have another opportunity. Anyone else?
Mr. Bobby Farber.
Bobby Farber, 48, 29, sent on his way. We know where this is going. All right. I'm not ha, lights are getting fixed. I'm not happy with the blue ones that are out there. I'm taking that to the next level tomorrow. We'll get that done. It was asked at the last meeting. I did a little, little investigating. It got through. Seminole Pratt Whitney, um, that's in what they call the status 60. Typically, that means it's gonna get done in two to three months, but it seems like it's been in status 60 for about six months.
Are you talking about the new streetlights that we're supposed to get?
Yes.
It's actually been that way for six years.
Well, no, I understand that, but I think we've taken it to the next level, right? We've pulled the wire in and everything.
All the wire, all the handholds are installed. We're waiting for their guys to come draw it.
That's recent, though.
I was told at the beginning of the summer that it was gonna be three months.
Yeah. Well, it's- There's a holdup there.
In the last six months, I think that would-
Yeah, in six years.
I can tell you that you're going to get octagonal concrete poles. Um, they're gonna have the standing cobra head on it, and we're slated, from what I understand, as a total of 158, 79 of them will be going on Seminole Pratt Whitney. And then the other 79, I'm assuming, we've got Town Center Parkway Northwest now, we have Persimmon West, and all the other things that are coming in. So that's kind of where you're gonna be going with that. So hopefully can find out a little more info and at some point we'll see them out there digging and knocking those poles in because it's dark. Um, my next question really is, I just was curious about, we all know what's going on with Aldi, and with their refrigerators, and they shut down, the meat's all gone. I'm just curious. In order to get a TCO, we do have to get an inspector in there, right? He's gotta make sure from the health department, it's got to be, um, the refrigeration has to be a certain temperature. It's all, I mean, you know-
They have a TCO. Do they have a CO already, Ken?
I believe they do have a CO and they, at the time of the inspections and everything, everything was operational. The fact that it failed that post, post, uh, CO, post anything else is the store's responsibility to maintain.
Okay. Because what I found out was, is, and I was, I really was baffled by it. When they built the store, when you first walk in and there's, um, the shopping carts, there's no air conditioning. And in the back, there's no more air conditioning either. They have a box, but outside of the box, there is no air conditioning. And every time that door opens, their refrigerator's there, and it's bringing that temperature down. So in the back, they have it with wind, you know, with doors on the thing, and it's working, but I, I don't even know like how that was allowed or how they, I mean, I guess it's up to the builder, unfortunately, but that's the reason. So when you come in there and that big puff of air comes in there, it's affecting the, uh, the refrigeration. I talked to the guy extensively about it, and they didn't put it in the back because they didn't want the employees to sit in the back where it's, that's in air conditioning. So, uh, but again, it's affecting all of that. I just, I didn't know how it got past the, uh, the inspector.
Must be on my code.
Well, Winn-Dixie had air conditioning.
They had, I'm sorry?
They had air conditioning, Winn-Dixie.
They had, they have air conditioning in the store, but for some reason, whatever they did in the back, they, they have a freezer, they have their refrigeration. Outside of that, maybe where they store fruit and stuff like, it's not air conditioned.
How many storage areas?
Uh, right. And they just leave it there.
It would have to be up to the code, right, Ken?
It has to meet, um, health department codes, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the engineers designed it. The fact that they may have designed it to a bare minimum, that's nothing that, as long as it meets the code and it's designed and approved by an engineer.
And, uh, yeah, they're, so they didn't want the employees and they supposedly installed all the bad refrigeration. Just wanted to bring it up. They're a big business here. And they opened up and they just went like that, and then they took Gator Shack with them also.
It's not their first rodeo.
No, but I was told all the new stores, they know this problem, and they're delaying all the openings on the other stores. So unfortunately, we got the one that opened.
Mr. Farber, thank you for helping with the lights.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right. Presentations and proclamations. We just have Hunger Action Month. Sponsored by Mr. Vice Mayor Langowski. Whereas since 1981, Feeding South Florida has worked to address hunger and food security in the city of Westlake, providing our community in need with immediate access to nutritious foods and other vital resources and support. And whereas hunger does not discriminate, it knows no race, religion, or age. In South Florida, approximately 1 million individuals face hunger. Food should not be an impossible choice for the community of the city of Westlake. And whereas Feeding South Florida leads hunger and poverty advocacy efforts in our community while transforming lives through innovative programming and education that provides economic growth and overall well-being. And whereas, the city of Westlake is therefore committed to supporting Feeding South Florida so that together we can achieve a hunger-free South Florida. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Westlake, I, John Paul O'Connor, mayor of the city of Westlake, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby officially proclaim and recognize that October 25th is Hunger Action Month. Be it further proclaimed by the city of Westlake, this proclamation is duly sealed, ribboned, and approved by the members of the council. The foregoing proclamation is sponsored by Councilwoman Charlotte Leonard, and upon unanimous consent of the council, the mayor declares it proclamation duly enacted.
I don't know if it was-
Let it to you, but either way. Hunger Action Month. Next, we have Patriot Day. Whereas 24 years ago, September 11th, 2001, America was suddenly and brutally attacked by terrorists, and thousands of innocent Americans were killed and injured as a result of these attacks, including the passengers and crews of the four aircraft workers in the World Trade Center and Pentagon, rescue workers and bystanders. And whereas, in the spirit that moved rescue workers and firefighters to charge into darkness and danger that September morning, our nation was united to stand strong and show its resilience in the face of tragedy, the enemy attempted to tear at the fabric of our society by destroying our buildings and murdering our innocent, but our strength did not and will not waver. And whereas, on this anniversary, all citizens of Westlake are urged to observe a moment of silence to honor those who were lost as a result of these attacks, and are encouraged to thank our nation's incredible service members and first responders, many of who are on the front lines of our fight against terrorism. We will always remember the sacrifices made in defense of our people, our country, and our freedom. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Westlake, Florida, does hereby proclaim September 11th, 2025, as a day of remembrance, to honor those no longer with us, to give thanks to our first responders for all they have done and continue to do, and to rededicate ourselves to the ideals that define our country and unite us as one. That was proclamation day. Uh, Veterans, uh, Veterans Day. It's a great one, too. In memorance, in remembrance and appreciation of our veterans, whereas our veterans represent the very best of America, they have bravely answered the call to serve in the finest military force in the world, and they have earned the dignity that comes with wearing the uniform and defending our great flag. And whereas, on Veterans Day, we remember these heroes for their valor, loyalty, dedication, and encourage all Americans to recognize the fortitude and sacrifice of our veterans through public ceremonies and private thoughts and prayers. And whereas, we continue to be inspired by the patriotism and dedication of those in uniform who continue to defend the principles on which our nation was founded. And whereas, the freedoms we enjoy as Americans do not come without a price. Our nation's veterans have sacrificed to preserve and protect our country and constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic. And whereas, throughout our history, courageous men and women have donned the uniform of our armed forces and built a noble tradition of faithful and dedicated service to our nation. And whereas, their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideas on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Westlake, I, John Paul O'Connor, mayor of the city of Westlake, by virtue of the authority vested in me, honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. And further, I am sincerely grateful for the service and sacrifice of all veterans. I call upon the residents of the city of Westlake to join me in honoring the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights.
You're under all.
Thank you. What do we got next?
Constitution.
A day of recognition and remembrance of the drafting of the Constitution of America, of the United States of America. I love all the proclamations. Whereas, September 17th, 2025 makes, marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Westlake, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Last proclamation. Declaring September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas, the week of September 7th through 13th, 2025 is National Suicide Prevention, September 2025 is a, is National Suicide Prevention Month, a time during which individual organizations and communities join their voices to amplify the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas, these observances are united in raising awareness that prevention is possible, treatment is effective, and people do recover. And whereas, the Zero Suicide Framework emphasizes that even one life loss to suicide is too many. And whereas, there's a call for a public help response to increase suicide intervention and prevention efforts with increased community level efforts and strategies. Whereas, we know that being kind, asking directly about suicide, and fostering social connection can save lives. And whereas, it is essential that we educate and encourage relatives, friends, coworkers, providers about signs of suicidal addiction, and that it affects all people in the community. And whereas, we believe it takes all of us doing what we can to create community, help suicide. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council, the people of the city of Westlake, I, John Paul O'Connor, mayor of the city of Westlake, by virtue of the authority vested in me, declare and recognize September 25th as National Suicide Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to join me in doing what they can by being kind, curious, and connected to end suicide in Westlake. Signing all of these at the end of them.
Sergeant's back. Let's answer.
That quick? Woo! Like that. Please. All right.
I just want to clarify some stuff and I want to put the citizens at ease. Um, when it comes to the burglaries and construction sites that are actually down, year-to-date, last year around this time, it was 22, and then year-to-date now is 12. Okay, so I want to clarify that. And then calls for service were, um, 1,200. All right. We had, uh, an increase in, like I mentioned before, in traffic. Traffic enforcement is up 51%.
In a month?
No, this is, yeah, the month. Correct. That's for the month. Last year around this time, it was 1,300. This year is 1,200.
Okay.
All right. Um, and what other-
The city's growing, yet the calls are going down.
Well, yes, that's a good thing. And that's why we were talking about non-existent. So we have a, a, a decrease in crime and, and certain activities that are, you know,
Yeah.
that you guys, uh, are dear to you guys. Um, what other ones you want? Traffic stops? We had an increase. We had 130, uh, the previous month, we have 156.
Wait, what was 529?
Yeah, you said 529.
529, that's, uh, year-to-date.
Yeah. Monthly was, I thought that sounded high. What is it?
Yeah. So year-to-date, 529.
And this month?
This month, we had 158.
158?
Yes.
And it's down from last-
No, it's actually up. Productivity and, and traffic stops are up. At least there's more enforcement, more deputies and, and more traffic.
Did you see the breakdown of warnings versus citations yet?
No, that I'm gonna work with and I'll get you that on the next, on the next meeting.
Excellent.
Right?
Sergeant.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Just wanted to clarify.
I really appreciate coming back. Thank you so much.
All right, no problem.
Consent agenda. Section of the agenda consists of routine of administrative items that require final approval by the city council and may be approved by its entirety by a single motion. There will be no discussion of these items unless a council member requests such, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on a future agenda. Do we have a motion to amend the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Gleason, seconded by Councilman Werner. Roll call. Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Excellent. Moving forward. We have before us, ordinance 2025 dash zero seven, establishing four months for March 26th, general municipal election. On first reading, city attorney, read by title.
Yes, sir. Ordinance by title, and ordinance to city council, city of Westlake, Florida, establishing the qualifying dates for the March 2026 general municipal elections in accordance with the direction of the Palm Beach County Supervisor's Elections, providing for conflict, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, counselor. Madam Clerk, you want to give us a quick little update on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item is to amend the city's charter for candidate qualifying dates for the city's municipal general election. Currently, section 11 of the city's charter and charter entitled elections sets the dates for qualifying for municipal elections from and including noon on the first Tuesday in January to and including noon on the second Tuesday in February of the year in which the election is held. In efforts to comply with the supervisor of elections deadline, staff is requesting that qualifying dates be changed to November 4th to November 12th.
What is it again? Sorry, what are the dates?
November 4th through November 12th. It would start at noon on November 4th and then November 12th at noon. It is an extra date.
Qualifying?
Qualifying date.
When's the actual agenda, uh, election?
March 10th.
Oh.
They named it so many days before.
We did this last year.
We have to do it every year.
Three years ago.
That we have an election.
Yes.
Qualifying is in November, so it's not necessarily amending the charter. It's an ordinance laying out the, we're not changing the actual charter, right? we're not changing the actual charter, right?
No, sir, we're allowed to pursue this action pursuant to state statute, chapter one sixty-six. It's referenced in the ordinance, yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you for that update, Madam Clerk. Let's open up the public hearing on this matter. Do I have any public comments on our qualifying dates for the election? No? Okay, out closed public hearing. Council discussion, we having comments? We're complying with Supervisor election, it's what they want, what we've done. Any comments? No? Any a motion?
We approve of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero seven. Second. opposed.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who did the second. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Vice Merlingowski. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner. Councilman Gleason.
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero, thank you.
New business, we have before us the RFP, twenty twenty-five dash zero one, solid waste and recycling collection disposal. City manager, what you got?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as my August fourteenth memorandum stated, basically, the committee has reviewed the four RFPs that we've reviewed and have ranked Waste Management as the highest ranked to-do based upon the criteria found in the RFP. Second was Coastal Waste and Recycling, third was Waste Pro, and third, fourth was the Good Companies. And representatives from Waste Management are here. If you have any questions.
Okay, are we, we gonna have presentations from the top two? Just from Waste Management, what's?
Waste Management, I don't see the second place here.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, they're back in the back. I'm sorry, so we'll go high ranked and then second, or it's your choice.
You got presentations?
It's, I don't think there's a power.
Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening. Wow, it's working well.
Company address?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jeff Saban, for the record, government affairs manager for WM, formerly Waste Management. And we're proud to stand before you this evening as the number one ranked firm that responded to the RFP that was very robust and one in which we were very honored to participate in as your current provider, of course, we're proud of that fact as well as your incumbent. And I have a very brief PowerPoint to touch upon, I think, what you were really evaluating, your evaluating committee was really looking at and focusing on value, on service delivery, on experience, incorporate capabilities, and actually weighted it to that extent. So we're, again, proud to be here this evening and to support me and our presentation, I have the whole staff of WM right back here. We've got the senior district manager, we've got Megan Kosov from Public Sector, and Luigi Pace, he's my boss. So I better do a good job. Waste Man, WM, I've already, let's see, can, do I just jot down? Excellent. On a higher level, looking at North America and WM's pretty much coverage of the entire country, forty out of fifty states, very proud of the fact that we are the largest provider of solid waste collection services and environmental services as well. And we're very proud of that fact. But we're more proud of the fact that we serve the entire country and Florida is really our hub, as I'll show you in a minute. But some of the driving points that I wanted to share with you this evening, the company's brand, and I kept saying it's WM versus the old Waste Management, is our commitment to services equalled by our commitment to the environment. Circularity or recycling, closing the loop through recycling throughout the country, our goals in twenty, twenty thirty or twenty-five million tons of materials we plan to recycle and repurpose. Utilization of our CNG access, which is compressed natural gas vehicles, our entire fleet is our goal to have it all converted. Minimize, actually, it's the minimize emissions, cleaner, greener, and safer to serve the community, your community, the city of Westlake, making your neighborhoods safer and cleaner. This is state of Florida and the WM footprint here is pretty substantial. And the reason I put this up and like to point to it and talk to it is the amount of assets and resources we have in the state of Florida to support our franchise agreement with you. And you can see we have sister, sister operations to the north, to the south, to the east and the west of Westlake. And what's important about that is the redundancy and the ability to move our assets in case of hurricanes and storm events, similar to the one we had in Fort Myers most recently, Ian. Pretty much put that operation out of business, but we didn't miss a collection day. We had resources on the ground to support our operations there and we didn't miss a beat. And it's because of our commitment to the state of Florida and especially South Florida and the city of Westlake. This is kind of a higher level overview of our overall state operations. We actually have, yeah, thirty-two hauling districts throughout the state, eighteen and twenty-four transfer stations, all supporting our operations around the state of Florida. But more importantly, what happens right here in Palm Beach County is our location right here in Boynton Beach, right, right down the street, serving this residents and businesses here in the city of Westlake. That's a sizable operation, supported by our team of dedicated service providers and crew members, all dedicated to this particular contract and have over three hundred years of experience. That means a lot when it comes to people knowing the neighborhoods as well as they do. They pretty much know when the school buses are coming, what time to be where and when to keep the neighborhood safe. That's the kind of commitment we've made to the city of Westlake. And we'd like to continue on with that as well, with our whole crew members. Benefits of automation. Really, the purpose of this slide, since you're already on automated collection, the cart service and how efficient that is and how for curb appeal, the benefits of automation, specific levels of service, serving your community quietly, cleanly, and safely. Safety is a really key component of our initiatives. To keep our people safe is the most important thing, their most valuable asset. Automated, automated collection allows us to have, have employees have longer tenures. They can start earlier and stay later because they're not subject to the labor on the back of a rear loader. In this Florida environment is really, really difficult. Automation has allowed the industry to be, to give their employees a safer operating environment and lengthen their tenure, as I said, so. Onboarding. Why is that important? And how, as a company, does WM commit and invest in onboarding? It all starts with, oh, I jumped the gun here, let's see, did I, okay. I jumped to technology. Onboarding's next. So, yeah, as a company, we invest a great deal in technology from, from the very start for measuring hours. Drive cam is within the cabs of every truck, including our route managers, and now they're called operations managers' vehicles. It's a tool for coaching our employees as well. Where the drive cam is activated, it captures twenty seconds before and twenty seconds after of all activity that took place in and around the vehicle.
The three sixty?
Yeah, no, we have three sixty and that's the smart truck. The three, the three sixty smart truck has pretty much cameras everywhere, including inside the hopper, where we can see materials going into the hopper and identify those things that may be a problem or can. We're faced with a tremendous challenge right now on people disposing of those batteries. We've had more truck fires, I swear, in the last, in the last year with the oncoming of the Ni-CAD batteries. Because they make, and then if they get wet, they explode. So it's a big education thing. We're working with our businesses and obviously our residents. We're, we're really asking them and challenging them to take those batteries to the solid waste authorities depot. They're conveniently located and it keeps that hazardous materials out of our trucks and also keeps from exposing our employees to it as well. And I talked a lot about the ASL trucks, we had talked about that as well, so. Onboarding, here we go. Onboarding the most valuable asset in our enterprise, our employees. And that differentiates us from the competition is we, we pre-screen during our hiring process, meaning is, are these people, is this what they really want to do? And then we invest in a two-week training center, all costs and expenses paid by the company, sending them to our Fort Myers Training Center for two weeks of intensive training and education. So they get the bookwork in case they need additional CDL upgrading and things like that. But also to get into the culture of WM, how important, the importance we place on the service we deliver, but most importantly, to keep everybody safe and coming home every night to their families. We do that as, as, safety is really the pinnacle of what we believe in, to keep our people safe at all times. And then the benefits. We use benefits to not only recruit, but to retain. And also, we've expanded our offering of benefits, not only in the medical area, but education, it's expanded to family education as well. Okay, I got the, go ahead. Collateral, communication is absolutely critical in communicating with our customers, especially residents. And we do that through mailers, brochures, and leave behind, tagging those items that need to be specially handled. Communication is key, we have a web-based landing page for storm. Any resident can access that to determine whether we're on schedule and what our storm activity is going to be in terms of their route impacts or changes. Same with holidays, we have the same landing page. We only have two holidays, as you know. Everything else, when the solid waste authority closes, that's the only time we're not. And we really, we have seventeen customers, sixteen plus Westlake, in Palm Beach County. We're so proud of that fact. And we'd like to keep you as a customer going forward into the future.
What sort of back check?
Sure.
Just move that quick.
Yeah.
What are the, what are the holidays again?
Thanksgiving and Christmas. That's it. Yep. And I, just like I said, on behalf of our entire WM team, thank you for the opportunity to review your residents and businesses for the past five years and look forward to working with you and your staff and finalizing the details of a comprehensive franchise agreement. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
I'm sure we've got, we've got questions, are we doing questions?
You can do questions at this time, or you can have, host will speak to you and then have questions of either one.
We'll get a wait for questions later?
I think so.
Okay.
It's, it's up to the council's decision.
Yeah, let's, let's see the other presentation and then we can ask questions of each individual.
I'll take this with me then.
Yeah, whatever you need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation.
Good evening, everyone. We just had a little technical difficulties, we didn't know to email the presentation, so we did make copies for everyone, so you can look, you don't have to turn around and make you look face to face and do that. Zoe, did you get the link?
Wait, just give us a moment. Try to fit it over.
Each one was from eighteen.
Yes, sir.
In those categories, we've got there's one up to thirty-five. And then we told us the most.
Thank you.
Peters.
Thank you, thank you. Good old fashioned way. Words too.
Actually does the presentation for us.
City manager?
Yes, sir.
Did we give a certain time period for the presentations? I'm just curious.
No, we just asked him to come and speak to you very briefly.
Got it, okay.
We anticipated it would be more questions than presentation.
Sorry for the delay, Mr. Mayor. I apologize also, but this is.
Listen, this is a big deal, let's, that's.
No, it is, and we were.
Not rush it, let's.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, thank you.
Nobody's in any hurry. It was a big deal.
How about them Seminoles, huh?
Watched that game?
Yep. Perfect, we can stop with this one. Down to go forward. Okay, perfect, go backwards the other way. Okay, you got that slide, perfect. All right, we're ready to go. What you have in front of you will be presented on the board, so you don't got to turn around. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us, mayor, vice mayor, council members. My name is John Casagrande, I'm the senior vice president for Coastal Waste and Recycling. With me is my team that has helped put this presentation together. Patty Hamilton, our vice president of branding culture, Trevor Black, market area and the president, he does, he's the man who does all the work. And Ed Peters, who's a municipal marketing manager for Palm Beach County. Coastal is privately owned waste and recycling company. Our headquarters, where our CEO, COO, senior leadership team, and most importantly, our customer service department sits in Palm Beach County. We don't have a call center, we don't, everything, all the phone calls go right to Palm Beach County. We have partnered with McCrory Asset Management, one of the largest infrastructure investment groups, providing a robust and solid financial foundation for growth and for us and for long-term sustainability. With that backing of almost six hundred billion dollars, we have, we're able to win eighteen exclusive municipal contracts over the last seven years. We have grown in our seven years to sixteen hundred employees. We operated over five, forty-five locations in Florida, Georgia, and now South Carolina. This is just a small footprint of our operations. We can break down our market areas into three areas, South Florida, the Gulf Coast, and the South Atlantic region. Our leadership team here has, I would say, decades and decades of experience. Myself, I've had over forty years in South Florida. Our COO and other of us, we probably have three hundred years of experience of doing it ourselves. That's the key, what you'll hear tonight. You heard Waste Management make an amazing presentation on what they do in Canada, what they do around the country. What you need to be concerned with is what goes on here today in Westlake. What you need to be concerned with is what goes on here today in Westlake. We are a local company, we are growing, but we still maintain local presence, and that's why we've been able to grow the way we have. We've been very, very successful being there, being able to meet the needs of all these municipalities, and you'll hear a little bit more about that. This is, again, the local team, the CEO, he's third generation, myself, I'm third generation, Mr. Lamagino, again, third generation. Patty comes along and she does an amazing job. She has been in Palm Beach County for about thirty years. She's the, our vice president of brand and culture. Before that, she was the vice president of Schumacher Sales for many years. Trevor, our area president, he gets it done. He's the guy who gets the trucks out, he's the guy who manages all the operations, he's the guy who does all the transitions, he'll talk to you about the operation. Our senior district manager, Ed Peters here, does all the municipal marketing, and our district manager for Palm Beach County is Frank Brown. I'm going to turn it over to Trevor and talk about some of these transitions.
Okay. So transitions are very important when you are evaluating an RFP like this, and I wanted to review some of the stats that we have that are key indicators for our transitions. As JC mentioned, we've done ten of them over the last five years, which we'll see more on the next slide, but seven of them have been with the current hauler for Westlake. So ten successful transitions in the last five years. We do retain about sixty-five percent of the current employees, so there's not a lot of job displacement. We put a hundred and forty-two brand-new trucks on the street, which they are brand-new, never picked up garbage, and we do have all the trucks for the Westlake transition, should it get awarded to us, already sitting, ready to go. We've delivered over seventy-four hundred new commercial containers, over a hundred and ten thousand residential carts. Our total service performance, and I really want to highlight this, per ten thousand services, point zero one five percent, meaning point zero one five percent of the time, we'll get a phone call for a potential service issue. And that's in the first month of a transition, the hardest month there is to service it. On-time launch and contract start, one hundred percent, and first month service performance, point, zero point one eight. And then here's.
Before you go back, I guess in the transition, one of the slides did not transfer. I want you to go back to the slide before that, the transition slide.
This is a, this is a very important slide.
Hit the microphone, I'm sorry.
That we have transitioned to, and it didn't come across in the email, but to give you an idea of all the, all the, all the contracts that we have transitioned over the years and from who. City of Call Springs, Cooper City, Walton Manor, Lantana, Palm Beach, North Miami Beach, Davie, Fort Lauderdale, Gulfstream, Brown Municipal. Out of those contracts, we transitioned, we're very successful in transitioning, and six of those from Waste Management. So we wouldn't have any problem transitioning this contract as well, so what makes us successful is that we have the people and the equipment ready to go. And this is a great story about what happened to Loxahatchee, I'll let Trevor tell you that.
Are these all the transitions from Florida? Since twenty twenty?
This is not, this is not, this is.
So Palm Beach County, we've got Lantana and Gulfstream.
And Loxahatchee.
And these are, these are Loxahatchee, this was the first one we ever did.
Okay.
So the reason for including Loxahatchee, we were awarded that contract weeks before we had to roll it out on October first, and you can see here what the assistant town manager, Francine, said about us. It was a Herculean effort, they were extremely grateful, it was a very quick transition, it was our first one in South Florida. You know, the first one's the hardest, right? But to get that kind of feedback speaks volumes to the level of service that we provide. We would be offering a brand-new fleet of trucks, like I said, they are in stock, ready to roll, they do have all the same GPS technology, the contamination technology detecting those batteries. We did offer a mix of automated and manual. I spent a lot of time out in Westlake driving around to figure out what the best way to service the city would be, and I do believe a level of manual service would be good for the bulk that does get put out, because it's hard to service with an automated truck, it's not in a car. So the schedule that we were proposing was Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, MSW, then Balken Yard Waste we propose Monday and Tuesday, and recycling on Thursday and Friday. We are proposing three drivers, two helpers for those manual routes, one dedicated customer service rep, and one dedicated supervisor for the city of Westlake, and that person would be entirely dedicated to your city to make sure the level of service is there.
So some, some of the city would get Monday, Thursday, the rest of the city would get Tuesday, Friday, and that would just be based on?
Based on area efficiencies.
And then the key to that, the bulk would be, the bulk, as you see, we put it on the first cycle day, everybody does their lawn service and all the cuttings and their, you know, their home area work on the weekends, and so that's why we decided to put the bulk in yard waste on Monday for the Monday, Thursday people, and Tuesday for the Tuesday, Friday.
Yeah, we are sorry.
And then we are also under contract with the Solid Waste Authority of Palm Beach County, we recycle a hundred and fifty thousand tons of yard waste annually. All the yard waste that gets collected will go to our facilities, where it'll get ground up and then sent to a recycling facility, get turned into sod or soil. And we've had that since twenty twenty-two, and it's in place until twenty twenty-eight. And this is the facility that we would be housing the trucks out of, it is right down the street in Lake Worth Beach, it's a brand-new facility, about a year old to us. It's almost seven acres with a twenty-five thousand square foot shop for all the maintenance repairs. And with.
And before we get into the questions, obviously, we were trying to get this done quickly, we were told it would be a five-minute presentation, but we try to limit the slides, but at the end of the day, we are cheaper. And we offer the city not just one option, but three options. It's about service, it's about, you know, what we can do for you locally, okay? What we are, we are here, we're here now, we're doing Loxahatchee, and we offered you guys the same deal we made with Loxahatchee. Loxahatchee was a five-year deal, and negotiated a seven, got a better price. And we offered also laid out a ten-year deal for a better price. It's about what, you know, what you get for your, the bang for your buck. Waste Management's a good company, they're a national company, we're a local company, we're the big company field, and that's why we've been able to be so successful. So thank you very much for your time, and I'm sorry for a little bit of confusion in the beginning there, but we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you so much. How do we want to do, how do we want to do questions? Do we want to bring back, you've been the first present, presenter, and ask those questions? Waste Management, if you could come back up? I believe we've got some questions for you. I'm just going to open up the floor. I've got mine, but I'll reserve them.
Thank you for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. We currently get service from Waste Management on Tuesday and Friday. Are you, are you proposing the same schedule?
Yes, sir.
And what would be the hours during those days?
I believe the hours are set by the, the agreement. I think the starting time is seven, seven AM. So we're not changing anything that we're currently doing. The seven AM start time. Oh, we'd like to start at six, but. Everybody, no, but, hey, oh, hey, all right, seven thirty, seven thirty.
It's a very impressive operation you guys have, it's worldwide, right?
Well, no, we're, we're really North America-based.
North America.
And our headquarters is in Houston, Texas, but our local headquarters is right here in Boca Raton, we're in Palm Beach County. And our customer service, where the phones are answered also is premier, it's answered right here in Palm Beach County. Yes, sir.
Getting down to the brass tacks, when the trash can is picked up and emptied and is put back down, is it put back down upright?
That's, yes.
That's the idea?
That's, that's the concept. Yes, sir.
Doesn't happen.
And in the same vicinity, proximity. Where, where it's picked up is where it should be left behind.
Right.
That's, that's the, and upright.
When I was coming out, coming to the meeting tonight, happened to be our trash pickup, both the trash can, trash receptacle, and the can, bottle receptacle were upside down.
The cart was upside down?
The receptacles. I just want, I'm just curious.
Thank you, yeah, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
That input.
I have a picture if you want to see.
I'm going to bring, I'm going to bring Jason up. I'm bringing my Jason up.
The reason I bring that up is because as I was reading through all the proposals, one of the companies, I forget which one, specifically said in their cover letter, we return the receptacles uprights. So when I saw that and I went out in my garage, I saw these, I figured I'll take a picture and then ask the question.
It's pretty difficult to do that, especially mechanically. With the recycling, though, I did see that during the summertime, sometimes we'll flip the bins over so they don't collect water. So, and I saw that your blue one was flipped over.
Yeah.
We'll do that with the manual cans as well, we'll flip them over because of the, because of the rain.
Whole holes on the bottom.
Right.
If there is, it'll drain out.
Got the, I understood. Pick it up where it is and put it back where it's supposed to.
Well, as you want to say, the service that you guys have provided from our, my standpoint has been very good, so I have no complaints about that, even though some of them might be upside down.
We'll address that, sure.
That's an issue for me, but I thought I'd just mention that. You've had, I think, nine years with us, I think, wasn't the original?
Cumulative.
We gave you two extensions.
The original agreement was with ADS, Advanced Disposal, and it was a piggyback of the solid waste authority, area two, district two, whatever you want, and that particular contract is what, yes, yes, sir.
Right, okay. All right, I have no more questions, I think you've done a fine job.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Questions? Questions? No, forgot, questions? I've got a button. How many, how many trucks are in Westlake?
I'm going to call Jason up, he can tell you exactly, per route, MSW.
How many trucks do we dispatch?
Thirty-four hundred, I can do the math, yeah, but go ahead, Jason.
Jason White, senior district manager, how are you?
How's it, sir?
Three trash trucks, three recycle trucks, and two bulk trucks.
Okay, so, so you managed to cover all the residential with three trucks?
Yeah, well, three trash, three do the recycle, and then.
Right, you have two trash trucks. And at what point, because, you know, we are the fastest-growing city in Palm Beach County.
Yes, you are.
At what point do you need another truck in here?
We're thinking the end of twenty twenty-six, beginning of twenty twenty-seven, it was already worked into our.
And then it'll go four?
And every two years, with, you're looking at about thirty, thirty-five a month, so.
All right, and every truck has two employees?
Yes, well, the recycle, or the trash trucks are automated, like you saw, so they only have one, the recycle with the dual sort has two, because the trucks split in half, so, and then the bulk are two. So you have two on the recycle trucks, which is three of them, and two on the bulk trucks, where there's two of those, and one on the trash trucks.
Okay. Keeping all the days the same.
Yeah.
Is there an anticipation to have to go to two separate days, like different days?
We talked about it, and we, we, we just figured with the, with the change in the contract with the coming up, we just wanted to leave it the same. I would think as fast as you're growing, maybe down the road, we would do that, but.
You don't think it's necessary now?
No.
Is there any benefit to doing it in two separate days?
It's, cities and towns look at it different, do I want the trucks in there five days a week, do I want them in there three days a week, you know, on the roads and all of that, so it's kind of like a preference, you know, do you, do you want the truck out there four days a week? So we've got contracts where we do, you know, the four days a week, and then we got other ones where we do two.
Right. He was flying through this presentation so fast. What, what's baked in in terms of customer service, complaints, percentages, all of that? I don't know if it was in the presentation or not, but you guys have a lot of complaints?
It, it, it wasn't in the presentation, the last time we did it for your staff, it was kind of like theirs, it was like a point zero zero one.
Okay.
For the amount of.
And is there something, when I at least say, I'm a, I know the answer, but I want you to say it out loud, what's based, what is baked into the contract for when you guys do screw up? Do we charge back or paying us?
Yes, there's a whole bunch of legal, like, liquidated damages that you could put towards the haulers.
And is that already in there?
It's already in, it's in the current one now.
What's the most common thing that happens?
Miss pickups, if someone has, if a contractor has many misses, yeah, yeah.
Or the other thing that could happen is they have a major failure in their trucks and they don't finish for the day, so they come back the next day, that's usually where we start working with them and then started hitting them for missed pickups.
Where, where do all your trucks get stored?
Right here in Bling Beach.
Bling?
Yeah.
And at what point do the trucks become new trucks? When do you guys swap them out, how many years does it serve?
They just got, well, the city just got three brand-new trash trucks last year.
You did?
Yes, yes. So the recycle trucks are like three years old, but there will be newer ones coming in for this contract, for this start, and the bulk trucks are roughly three years old, and there'll be new trucks, so.
Okay. You have any questions?
I do, I actually have one. And I know the city's been working with it, but also, but it's on the automated trucks, when the conveyor comes down, sometimes there's oil leakage or grease, whatever that comes out.
Yeah.
And then months down the road, then there's some kind of pressure cleaning done, and then people just see white spots all over the road. I don't know if it's whatever chemical you're using, or, and I, I have residents in my neighborhood that complain about it, so I'm not sure if there's anything I can do about that.
No, there, there's a compound that the company, we will do ourselves small cleanups, but we have a third party that'll do it, and they were using a compound that left that white, so it's just a different process now, we got, so it's more perpetual.
You change it?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
The escalator clause in the agreement, is that tied to CPI?
There you go. And I'd like to go talk briefly about that, the new trucks were a result of working with staff, we did have some issues prior, and we, we do stub our toe. It happens, logistically, for sure, so we do have some missed pickups. The beauty of a missed pickup, too, is the tracking is when someone calls in, all of our trucks have GPS, we can see exactly the track where they've gone, the exact route, and what time they were in front of that particular residence at that given time, but the customer is always right, so it was a missed pickup, and that's how we, that's how we address it, so. Escalator.
I have one question to you.
Yeah.
I know your trucks are automated for the trash, but there are times when that automation goes into effect and then garbage spills on the side of the truck. Is the driver responsible for getting out and cleaning that up? Okay, because.
Yeah, we should be.
Sometimes they don't, I can tell you that much.
Yeah, they should, they should be picking it up.
I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Yeah.
That counts in the order of questions.
Go back to my question, if you.
Yes.
Is there an escalation clause in the agreement for annual increases?
There is, there is an escalation clause in the agreement, in the proposed agreement, and our proposal has, has it built into the rate every year, so.
What's, what's that rate?
Five percent.
Five percent?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
And that's annually?
Annually, yes.
And the proposed contract is for how many years?
Five.
We revisit, in five years.
Correct.
Five years with an extension?
Five years with.
Two one-year extensions.
Two, the current agreement has two one-year extensions, but the sample agreement or the agreement that your staff is going to be working on, that will include whatever terms that you all decide are most beneficial to the city.
We have more questions for Waste Management?
No, just one clarification, one of the things we did do in the RFP is we did, looking at the number of counts of pickups and knowing the volumes in the trucks and stuff, we did allow for the split of the city to be able to split, not neighborhoods, but say, four neighborhoods or five neighborhoods on a Monday, Thursday, the rest of them on a Tuesday, Friday, again, to help facilitate, because the trucks only hold so much, they can only pick up so many houses, so help, to help the haulers be able to get in and out quicker without having to make a stop, run to the dump, empty and come back to finish their day, we allowed that in the RFP to be able to split the city, not, not neighborhoods themselves, but communities. So we can do that in the RFP, it's an option, we don't have to, but again, put that in there so that we could more efficiently get the refuse out of the city as much as possible.
So you're saying that during the term of this new agreement, the hauler can come back and ask?
The city, the city can agree to the hauler and say, look, because of the volumes that we have, et cetera, et cetera, a Tuesday, Thursday only is killing us.
Right.
Let's split the city up, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, and, and go, again, try Let's split the city up Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, and, and go, again, trying to maintain the flexibility and efficiencies to get it out of the, out of the street and work with the haulers. Because sometimes if you stay too rigid, you burden them to the point where it doesn't become cost prohibitive. And it hurts their bottom line as well. So again, it's kind of a work, work, win-win relationship with them, working together to get the best rate for the citizen to get the solid waste out of here.
And we modeled our proposal to accommodate your, your growth, for sure. So, because we go through growing pains as well. We have, we've definitely modeled that. And I will say, too, that working with your staff, your staff is connected at the hip with, with Jason's team. That particular person stays in constant contact, monitoring and making sure that we're abiding by and, and providing the level of service that you've come to expect. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've got some questions for you folks, if you don't mind. Of course. You want to go first?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Just making some consistency, when you drop off the receptacles, are they upright? Is that assured?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's why we threw in some of the manual pickup, because it's a lot easier to make sure it's upright when you're pushing it back to where you took it up from.
Right. I, I do see that your rate is lower on a five-year term agreement by about a dollar per household per month. Would you be starting this off as a two-day-a-week pickup, like Monday and Friday, or, or is it a split?
Yeah, we would like to split it, so we would do a Monday, Thursday trash, Tuesday, Friday trash, and then bulk and yard waste on Monday and Tuesday, and then Thursday and Friday recycling. The reason for that is with a two-day schedule, say, service days are Monday and Thursday. If we get a Tuesday phone call, hey, you missed my house, we are going to provide a level of service and go back and get that, because the customer is always right. It's hard to do that when the trucks aren't in the city every day. So it's a lot easier if we have trucks in the city every day to go provide that level of service.
And you have an escalator clause in your proposal? What is that?
Five percent.
Yeah, it's the same, it was dictated in the RFP. What was that?
It was, it was in the RFP at five percent and/or CPI.
Right.
And it would be.
Five percent or CPI?
Or, or CPI, whichever is less or more. I forget how it was worded exactly. But that's also part of the contract. Final negotiations would be what that actually is.
So if CPI is more than five percent, it would be limited.
Be, be limited at five.
Rental would stop at five percent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Councilman Gleason?
I don't think so, sir. I'll let you know.
You guys have the 360 camera?
Yep, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And the GPS?
Yes, sir.
All nine yards, same thing?
Yep.
And in terms of when something doesn't go right, is there the same type of credits? How does that actually work?
Do you? Yeah, so.
Been back?
Yep, it's all written in the contract, the liquidated damages, and we'll follow that. But again, even if somebody does call in a missed pickup, we will go and verify it, just to make sure we did service it, but even then we'll still go back and pick it up.
How big, how big of a contract is this for, for the company? How big the deal is to Westlake as a city? Man, obviously, you bid on it, you want it, you want the contract. Is it, compared to your first contract, which was Loxahatchee? About the same size? Is it bigger? Is it smaller? Does it have the potential to be twice the size? I'm just curious kind of where we stand as a, you know, we're not the 3,000 pound gorilla, but, you know, maybe the 500 pound gorilla.
Well, as far as units, Loxahatchee's about 1,540 ton Loxahatchee. You guys know how many you have. For us, we're here in Loxahatchee. We intend to be here with Loxahatchee for a while. We've been there since 2019. We, for us, the contracts are, you build, right? So you build along Southern Boulevard, and we have a plan. Next year, Royal Palm Beach is out for bid. So, I mean, so, and then this, next year, I'm sorry, next year is the solid waste authority. So the same contract that you all had, or before you were, before you became Westlake County, that contract is out for bid, according to the solid waste authority.
That's all the unincorporated.
That's all the unincorporated area behind us. So there is a method to all the madness. You know, we have to compete for it. As you heard, Waste Management really never competed for it. They acquired it from Advance, and they've been here for nine years. So, you know, for us, you know, we have to compete, so we have to have a plan, and again, we like, like the growth up here, as you guys are well aware. We bid Wellington. We weren't successful, but again, you can't win them all, but we do have a plan.
Appreciate that.
Well, Trevor.
Hey?
Me?
Yes.
Nothing.
Trevor, you mentioned you were out in the community driving around.
Yes, sir.
For the trash can itself. So are you able to use this? Right now, it's kind of designed for Waste Management, where they can just pick it up and dump it. But you have no problems using our cans that we currently have?
No. Yeah, no, they're perfect for my need.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. Thank you guys so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Want to know what the difference in the points.
That would be questions for staff. Feel free to ask.
I was just waiting, so.
I believe now we're going to discuss this amongst the, you know, we have a robust discussion. So please, Councilman, mind if, ask all your questions.
So, specific to Waste Management, they scored 284. Coastal scored 273. I understand we had a Rubik's kind of scoring based on the RFP, but is there anything specific in the difference of 284 and 273 that stood out? Is there something?
It's just how the individuals ranked them, the three of us. We each ranked the, based upon the matrix, our scores. Then we came together and totaled what each one of us had done and came up with the total scores.
So it wasn't the price, or they had better trucks, or?
Some, all of that was, each category has, you know, I forget the actual numbers. One of them was 35 up to 35 points, one was 25 points, one was 15 points. So as you read the RFP, you would go, okay, on that, as I read it, it hits me as a 14 or as a 12 or whatever. Some of them because of, a couple of them because of their price at 60 bucks a month per house is like, yeah, no, pricing is, they're gone. So they got, instead of a 15 points, they got like a five, because that was just out of, out of schedule. But each one of us ranked individually, then we came together and said, you know, what's your, what's your total for each one? What's your total for each one? What's your total for each one? Added them up. That's how we came up with the numbers.
Did price have a certain?
It was wa, it was weighted on each person's individually.
Okay.
Weighted price as well.
That was my question.
What other, what other questions we got?
Yeah, in terms of the two candidate companies that we just heard from, would you say that the proposed contracts meet the requirements that you put out in the RFP?
Yes, their responses met the RFP on both of them. The actual contracts, they, I think Waste Management gave us a sample. I don't, you didn't give us a sample? Yeah, they gave us a sample. Either one of the samples, once it goes through the attorney, will work out the details, but they're basic contracts that we can work through.
Okay.
Do we field a lot of complaints from our current provider?
It varies. Hanif is out. One of the things that he does, along with the Happy Program, is he is out every day that there's pickup. And he cruises the entire city, checking on their status, and he's in contact with, whether it's Coastal in the future, Waste Management. He will be in contact with them, saying, hey, yeah, I thought you had done hammocks already, and yet I see half a hammock sitting out here. And I'll say, what happened? You know, did you miss it? Did it not get done? Did the guy turn on the thing? Or in Crestwind, where there's a lot of construction still, there'd be half a street that didn't get picked up because the guy couldn't get down there. Or even in the Pines, sometimes we have problems with the developer. All the contractors fill the street, and the guy, you know, you're the, you're the first guy that moved in. They're still building houses around you, and the trucks can't get down the street to get to you. We work with the developer and the hauler to make sure that those roads are open as much as possible. And if there's an issue, we find ways around it to make it happen.
So, so I will say this, Councilman Gleason, and you're relatively new to the council. We get a, we get all the complaints. We get them first.
No, I've, I've gotten a lot of them too, that's why.
Wait before staff get.
Yeah.
But the reason I asked that question is, is, and, and your answer was on point, is why do we need a staff member to follow around our contractor that's supposed to be doing the work?
Part of the changes that'll be in this is the complaints will be going direct to the hauler. We will just monitor it more.
Okay.
Differently.
Okay.
But because of what we inherited and how we started out, it was necessary to have somebody going out and double-checking everything to make sure it happened.
No, I get it, yeah, but I'm just saying, like, it would be hopeful that the contractor would.
Same, same as with this RFP, one of the things we have done from the beginning is the city, in conjunction with Sid Labor, has been delivering all the garbage, all the trash cans to new houses or replacements. Part of this contract, that responsibility will be going to the hauler. So when somebody orders a trash can, it goes into the system. It'll still go through Hanif. Hanif will make sure it gets to them. The delivery days will be there, but it'll be the hauler's responsibility to.
Stored in the city anymore?
No, they are, they will be storing them. They will be keeping them, and they will supply.
Can you lay out the other changes that were, how we used to do it, so what will be included in this new, these new contracts?
Basically, a lot of it, and also cart repairs, cart replacements. In the past, we didn't have cart repairs in there. Now there's cart repairs. There's a cart fee, it's $2 a month, that if the lid's broken, wheels are broken, whatever, the hauler has to replace the wheels or the lid or something like that. So that's also part of it, because what we were doing before is either we were repairing them or we were just changing them out, because it's damaged. We didn't have the parts in time to repair them. We're now putting that repair type situation, if they can be repaired, on the hauler. We're trying, we're trying, again, shift what was originally, in some respects, all on the hauler, that we picked up because of the way we had to assume, assume the SWA contract. In the beginning, we had to do certain things. For example, when we first formed, the SWA contract only allowed for a basically a 45-gallon operation, because it couldn't be over 50-something pounds to lift and stuff like that. So as we progressed, we went to the 90s, and we have 45s and 90s. That's why we have both in there now, to accommodate the loading.
So besides for the, the cans not being stored on-site and being handled directly by the hauler, customer service going directly to the hauler, are there any other major changes?
No, they, they will supply, they will be supplying the cans going forward. Once we run out of the number of cans that we have, they will be supplying the cans. It'll be stenciled, et cetera, in the color of our, our cans currently.
Will the hauler provide us a report or some kind of information as to how many complaints they've gotten, how they resolve that?
We, we will make sure that that's part of the contract.
Okay.
On a monthly basis. Complaints and number of complaints and resolutions.
So. This is a, this is a public hearing. I think we're just having a discussion right now. This item is not a public hearing.
No.
No, it's not a public hearing.
No, it's not a public hearing. So I'm just going to speak very candidly. I was a little bit disappointed. I thought that we were, so, so first and foremost, the dollar, the dollar a month is, is not enough to make that great of a, of a difference in terms of the decision-making. I really thought that we were a big enough client at this point to really, really create some competitiveness in the free market to where these, these companies would be, you know, jumping over each other to try to earn our business, and they, you know, they seem to be very almost lockstep in line with what they're offering and what they're delivering. That being said, $12 a year is not enough for me to want to jump into the potential. You know, it's almost like you stick with the, I don't want to say the devil. I don't want to classify anybody as the devil, but, you know, the devil you know. You, we, we have consistency. There's also something to be said for, you know, incumbent company. I, I can't see that, and I'm the most fiscally motivated person out there, and that's all I really want to care about. But at $12 a year, I can't imagine that's enough. Do it, and there's not enough, there's not enough benefits that outweigh, you know, there's, there's nothing great. I'm not seeing anything amazing to, to make me want to change our existing company. I, I thought we would have a lot of, a lot of competition, and I guess we're not just that big of a deal, as I thought we were. My opinion, you know, that we should stick with the devil we know. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I'm ready to.
Mayor, I would, I would take a different position on that. Coastal is proposing a reduced fee, even though we're not as big as you expected us to be, and in fact, as many competitors.
Yeah, right.
Nonetheless, they are hungrier. They have also indicated that if they went to a seven-year or a 10-year agreement, they can reduce the fee by four months, $4 a month, which is sizable. So, everything else being equal, I think that cost savings is worth pursuing. I mean, we, you've been a very staunch fiscal, responsible person with our millage rate, and I see this as another opportunity for us to get equal service for a less fee, and I think that's what the community is saying.
I also certainly weigh staff's recommendation. But let, let me hear what my other council member's thoughts are, and then I'll, I'll make a suggestion. What are you, what are you thinking there, Councilman Gleason? Where's your head at?
I like the fact that with, I don't like any terms longer than five years. That's just my opinion. But I think five years is a fair contract, but I wish that discount was put on a five-year agreement, and that might sway me a little bit more. Being that it is only less than a dollar, actually. It's kind of hard to switch to the unknown from the known. I will take a different perspective from your comments, though. I do think we are a big deal. I do think we're a great city.
I, I believe we are.
And I think we do demand, I know, I know you do as well. I think we do demand.
I was disappointed.
A little bit more competition. I think what was both pros.
We're in agreement.
Both, I think both, they both offer the same exact thing. I, I'm just more worried about switching to the unknown than the known for that, for that price point.
Fair. What's your other thoughts?
I agree. I'm also in the same corner of not wanting to do anything past five years, I think.
I agree.
Going outside of five, five years is just not, that cannot sound, you know, times keep changing. And, and the thing that we're trying to change our, our fees, make them come up a little sooner instead of having to drag on, say, for nine years. I also don't want to move past the five-year deadline. Five years is within the realm.
Good, we have consensus on that.
May I ask staff a question? Is there a provision for termination at any point during these terms?
I don't remember the exact termination clause, but I believe it's usually 120 days or something like that typically.
Yes. So. See some nods in the back of the room there.
So there is a termination provision, even if it were to be a 10-year agreement, which you would save $4 a month per household or $48 a year.
I mean, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable having any contract that's.
That's a long time.
I want, I want to revisit this in five years and go back to the, the free market capitalism and hope that we're as big of a deal as I thought we were in our, and it had, and they really, and also, you can't really, you know, fuel, fuel prices fluctuate, this and that, and all these other items going to, to what's going on. I don't, I would much rather stick with the five-year paths.
So am I correct that our current agreement was five years with a two-year?
Option, two one-year options.
And that's the same that you're presenting now? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, so we have that option with the current, and is that what Coastal is also offering? Five years with a two-year?
Yes.
Yes.
So they're both offering the same that we currently have. So I, I'm having a hard time seeing the difference, and I hate to say you both sound great, both offering the same services, I think as some of you had said. I like the idea of the $4 savings, though. So if we have five years with two-year option to renew, and we get to save $4.
No.
Done.
The $4 is only on the 10, the seven.
Well, but you said you were willing to.
$3.
$3.
$3 difference for seven years.
But they were willing to negotiate with the final contract. Did I not hear that? Okay, I thought I heard that, okay, so.
You're not going to negotiate the price beyond the proposal.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
There's a proposed base on their best.
Thought they were willing to negotiate that, but okay.
Can.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Just, just as a side bit of information. Every one of, I know some of you are in businesses and some aren't, every one of these trucks is about a 400K, 150K investment for every new truck. They need to really amortize that over a minimum of, seven is ideal, five is pushing the limit, and I push the limit on this as a five. They're really exposing themselves by doing a five. That's why we put into two one-year options, because if it does the two, if they're doing a good job and you do two one-year options, then they fully are able to amortize the cost of that vehicle over the seven years. So again, weighing all of that into consideration. You have to look at both, do you kill your providers, do you kill your vendors by holding certain things tight? Or do you say, you know what, maybe it's better for us to go a seven-year, go with this, go that, in order to lock in something that is a benefit over time.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Coastal for a seven-year contract.
It was still discussing, but go ahead.
That we approve Coastal for a seven-year contract at the price of $24.55 per household, which is $3, roughly $3 less than the waste management proposal. And with that option, the council, two, five, seven years down the road, can choose not to extend the agreement for two, for two one-year extensions. And that, that would be my recommendation, my motion.
I have a question for councilmen.
Sir, if you, before you have a question, the motion needs to be a second.
I will second.
We have a motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Vice Merlingowski.
Wait, a discussion. Mayor's got a question.
Discussion.
Oh, right, excellent. Could, could staff, if we approved our existing hauler, could we instruct staff to fine-tune, negotiate the rate lower than has been presented?
No, sir, we have to stay by the proposal.
So there's no, there's no room in this rate whatsoever?
You have to accept a proposal or reject with the terms.
Could we call for additional proposals to be made at a future date? If we reject.
You'd have to reject the ones you have now, and you could ask for another RFP.
Can I ask a terrifying question? We knew it was coming due. There weren't concerns that we had initially, which is why we really wanted to kind of throw the net wide and get some, some competition. So just remind me, I'm trying to think like.
It wasn't really concerns, we just, you know, we, we're, we don't make money on the trash.
Right.
It's through directly to the residents, and we thought that we could lower the rate, basically. By bringing it out to, to the market.
Okay, I was just trying to remember.
Mayor, I call for the questions.
We're still discussing. You call all you want.
Sir, you need to, you need to honor and call the question.
Okay.
We have a motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Vice Merlingowski.
I'm not ready yet to vote, just not. I want to talk more, so no.
Mayor O'Connor.
No.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
No.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion fails 3-2.
Okay, so we back to just open discussion?
Yes, sir.
Great. What, I, I don't know if this is a question for, for the attorney or for staff. What options do we have in terms of this contract to further negotiate, to get something?
I don't know, answer that question.
Need a new RFP?
If we reject the.
Reject all of them and go out the street again.
Mayor, if I could be recognized.
Please.
To the city manager.
Yes.
The seven-year agreement has two one-year renewals attached to the seven-year, or is the seven-year?
No, it's a seven-year, it's a seven-year flat.
Seven-year.
Is that what their proposal is, is a seven, is a seven-year flat?
And the five-year has two one-year attached to.
Options, yes. At the city's discretion.
At our discretion.
At our discretion, correct.
And there's a 120-day cancellation.
I, I believe so, something like that.
Clause. Is there any stipulations on the clause, or is it at the city's discretion?
I don't remember the exact wording. It may be with or without clause. It's sort of convenient, can you?
Okay.
Just don't think it's worth.
Are we allowed to ask questions of applicants?
Few ones for clarification.
Okay, wa, uh, waste management.
Please.
I know in your presentation, Waste Management mentioned that as of right now, we're continuing on the same schedule, there's a new truck coming online. When do you see that we would have to go to four-day pickups? Two, well, one, you know, half the city will be two days, and the other half will be Tuesday and Friday, you know.
The split. Right. No, I think, I think Jason indicated it'd be next, later next year, into '27. Before we would even do that.
If the new truck comes on.
New truck comes on, but that doesn't mean we have to necessarily reroute.
Right.
Do the split, but.
With that new truck, we can still continue on our.
Yeah, on your existing schedule.
Schedule, without having to.
In operation, speaking, I mean, yeah, yeah, that's really our, we didn't want to change anything, wanted to leave everything as, as, as long as possible to make any route changes.
Get confusing with our residents.
We, we.
Tuesday now, and my Monday now, and.
Well, we, yeah, that's why we wanted to keep things seamless, the same, same service days, no route changes. Because that, you know, what that does with residents, you gotta get way in front of it.
Will be different days.
It'd be different days, right? And then that starts a whole nother discussion, so that's why, transitionally speaking.
Transition, for $10 a year.
And our, our plan is to play in Tuesdays, Fridays through this next contract. If the city wants to change, like they asked us to come in and talk about, you know, the staff asks, hey, what if you did this or whatever? So we could do the Monday, Thursday, but our plan is to keep it the same throughout the whole length of the.
Yeah.
$10 a year, that could be a nightmare transition, we just don't know.
We don't know.
It's $10 a year.
It's five cents per pickup. It's five cents per pickup, that's the difference, to change, five cents.
You're responsible for five cents a pickup to bring a whole new outfit into the city. I just, I'm being completely honest.
I wish we could hear for the.
If it was.
Huh?
I wish we could hear for the.
If it was $100. It's $100. Let's go for it.
Mayor, I have a question of Coastal.
The same service, but changing is going to be big.
It'd be a lot.
The request for proposals stipulated that the pickup would be Tuesday and Friday, which is what I believe your proposal indicates, but you have a preference for two days, Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday, Friday?
Well, the questions, the questions were asked during the RP process, and the city gave the option to continue leaving it Tuesday and Friday the way Waste Management proposed and have the nine trucks in the city. We, as we said, we made it Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, less trucks in the city, and we're here. If there's a late set or a missed pickup on Monday, we're here on Tuesday. If there's, and if you has a missed pickup on Tuesday, we're here on Thursday. You, you don't have three days in between to go. So we, our, is, our proposal is Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday for the garbage, as well as the recycling and the yard waste, again, with all brand-new trucks.
Thank you.
You got a question?
So are we going back to newer rebuilds?
Just like, I'm sorry.
No, thank you. I, I've been in HOA neighborhoods where, where residents were forced to go from Comcast to Hotwire, and it was the biggest nightmare on the planet, and that's something less, 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 far less more important than trash. I think it would be irresponsible for us for five cents a pickup to go through a massive transition. And that's my opinion.
Well, that failed anyway, so.
Well, we're all.
No, I get it. And we cannot hear from the public?
Sure you can.
You have an advertise for a public hearing. Respectfully, you can entertain, but that should not have any proven value to your determination.
And we table it and bring it back and. What's in there?
No, what's going to change?
I mean, what do you have to redo?
It's a new RFP, what is that, 60, 90 days again? And when does this current contract end?
September 30th. I have had negotiating discussions with Waste Management, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff. They would be willing to extend on a month-to-month basis for a period of time after all the transition was occurring.
I, and I certainly appreciate that, but what's going to change unless, I mean, honestly, what's going to change? It seems the hangup is truly the five cents pickup, which I think it's a little irresponsible.
Mayor, it's not five cents a pickup, it's a dollar, just 98 cents a month per household. That's what's in the paperwork.
98 cents on Monday.
2625 for Coastal and 2722 for Waste Management, for WM.
At this point, I don't want to be here for hours for Waste Management. What do we need to do?
What do we need to do?
You can make a motion.
To do what?
You can do anything.
Can't do anything.
One or the other. You can do it.
So we recall a motion to vote again on the.
You can, you can make a motion for anything at any point in time.
No, I'm just trying to understand, like, what, would that be appropriate for the Nets to bring it back to the floor for a new vote?
It's, it's currently available for a new vote.
Yes, I'm.
He just needs to make a motion.
The prior, prior motion failed, so you have, you have to make a motion.
Coast Hall failed.
Of three others of you should make a motion, one of you.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
To just accept painting.
I will make a motion to approve Waste Management to be the hauler of the city of Westlake.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Vice Merlingowski, seconded by Councilman Gleason. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Switch.
Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
I'll vote yes, based on the fact that we have no other option at this point.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
I think absolutely everybody for submitting their RFPs and competing with the business, and I would absolutely, in five years, recommend that everybody do it again. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Head before the resolution, 2025, 22, Planning and Zoning Board, consideration appointment for alternate board members. City Attorney, lead by Title Omen.
Respectfully, Mayor, if you would make that appointment first, then we can incorporate it into the resolution.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Bobby Farber to fill the open seat.
Second. Planning and zoning.
We have a motion by Vice Merlingowski, seconded by Councilman Werner. Roll call, Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Resolution by Title Only Resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, appointing one alternate member to serve on the Planning and Zoning Board providing conflict servability and effective date. You'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Merlingowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
The city manager explain what that position is and what's expected of that person?
We just had our first meeting in three and a half years.
I, you have to go back to the original resolution. It's been, it's been so long since that was put together. There was something the prior council wanted, it's 2105, that they wanted an, an extra alternate person on Planning and Zoning Board.
And when one of us can't make president.
Right.
I'm wondering, so is that person expected to be here knowing that one of our council members will be absent?
Yes, they would be notified of all the planning and zoning meetings, and then they would be here, and if one of you is, is absent, they would sit on the Planning and Zoning Board.
Does one understand a little better?
They would, they would be in the loop and notified.
All right, so what's next?
We have the benefit of having Mr. Farver, who's here every year. You want to dress up?
Oh, you want to? Congratulations.
Do I have to give my name and address still?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, just want to say thank you. Yes, I've been here, I've been very in tune to everything that's going on, and I look forward to serving, should somebody not be here. I hope I could live up to the expectations of everybody, and coming here to Florida and getting involved in this is way out of my wheelhouse. Not that I can't do it, but it's something I've, I've become very passionate about. So thank you all very much for your confidence, and I appreciate it.
You have a servant's heart, Bobby, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, where do we, uh.
Resolution.
We have a, no.
No.
Financial reports.
Yep, we have before us fiscal year 2024 audit and financial reports to the manager.
Is that planning and zoning considered?
Yes, the auditors have finished our audit report. It's, it's presented before you for acceptance. Again, from my perspective, the key pages are the letters to management, and in the management letter, they did not find anything that raises attention that we have to correct in our audit.
Do we need a motion to accept it?
A motion to accept is in order.
I hope that we accept fiscal, fiscal year 2024 audit financial report.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Leonard, seconded by Vice Merlingowski. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
We have before us an annual ceremonial proclamation list, Madam Clerk. I feel like this is new.
It is.
Trying to get some organization.
Yes, staff would like to. Yes. Staff would like to present the attached list of ceremonial proclamations for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Please note this list includes any proclamations previously approved by council and presented before you.
Is it anything?
Yes. Mayor, I'd just like to add to the list. The federal government, and I believe the state government, have just approved January twenty-seventh as National Holocaust Remembrance Day. I would like to see if the council would agree to add that to the list.
Thousand percent. If it's not on here, let's add it. Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
We could amend the list to include Holocaust
Remembrance.
Remembrance. And then I need a motion to approve the list as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation list as amended.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Gleason, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We have before us discussion of hiring recruitment firm for, we have a recruitment firm for the position of City Manager. Discussion to amend the contract. Infomark.
Those are two separate items.
Those are two separate items. Well, they shouldn't be.
Well, but they are. They are. We can follow either end of.
I would like, I would like to see the amendment first, because any is added no matter what. Let's discuss it.
Recruitment?
Yeah, that's what's first.
We're talking recruitment or, okay.
It's first, right? Do we have, do I have to go in order?
Yes, sir. Unless you want to amend the agenda and have it be approved by a motion.
Can we amend? Can I get a motion to amend the agenda to swap E and F?
I move that we amend the agenda to put E before F.
Mine's not written.
My, City Clerk is first. Discussion for hiring recruitment and then administration, and you want to move administration.
The contract should be before the hiring of the recruitment.
The motion would be to amend the agenda to move item F in front of item E.
Yes. That's what I said. Motion to amend agenda, moving item F to E and E to F.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Leonard, seconded by Vice Merlingowski. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
I don't understand why. We didn't have any discussion. What's the explanation?
Because he wants to.
There's a first and there's a second.
I'll say no.
Okay.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Excellent. Okay. So now, we discussed, we have discussion to amend the contract with Infomark.
Question.
Sure.
Okay. So from our, recollecting what we talked about last week, it seemed like the consensus, I don't, I don't want to speak for everybody, but it seemed like the consensus was the council did not want Infomark to be the City Manager anymore. That's what it sounded like, so that's why I think the contract part was being separated.
I agree with that sentiment.
By everybody's comments, that sounded like. Yeah.
We're, we're moving with the punches here. Yes, I agree with you. Is the rest of the council in agreement? Do we want to carve out the City Manager role?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to notify Infomark of the intent to amend the contract, removing the City Manager functions from the scope of services.
To investigate or to?
No, no, to remove.
To remove.
Rather than creating an interim? That begs the question, when that change would be effective?
September twenty-sixth or seventh?
Well, then you, then how are you gonna hire a City Manager?
We need an interim in the meantime.
Correct.
Right. So upon hiring of a new City Manager?
Could we?
No matter what.
Okay.
The contract has to be amended.
I think what you're talking about is more of a longer-term situation, meaning, based on the conversation last meeting, ultimately, you're looking to hire a City Manager outside the contract of Infomark.
Correct.
That's for your permanent position.
Correct.
Full-time.
Full-time.
Nothing's permanent.
Right.
True.
So the question is, if you're going to amend the contract, are you then going to look outside the Infomark firm for the acting City Manager?
Not necessarily.
Why do we add the term interim in that phrase for the City Manager in the agreement? So that way, they're only providing the interim.
Possibly.
Possibly. That title could be acting.
Or what?
Yeah. Interim is kind of a.
All right. To me, it's just one in the same, if you want.
Semantics, but I think the contract. Notice, the amendment has to come before the, the assigning of an acting. You know, we have to at least notify. Ken, help me out here.
Do we, but can I pose a question?
Sure.
The motion was to the intent to do it. So if we're going to intend to do it, we could then make a motion to hire a firm, and then eventually let them know the date of the termination. Because it's not, I don't think, I don't, do we have to say a date?
We have to.
Because we don't know how long it's gonna take to hire someone.
How do I do an amendment if I don't have an effective date? Your contract, like any agreement, has an effective date.
Right. Right.
If you're going to amend it, when do you want that amendment to be?
Can't you say as early as?
I'm sorry?
Could you say as early as a certain date?
It could be a date.
Why don't we add the word, the car before the horse?
Either way, it's.
Wouldn't we amend it the date that?
And the only reason I do, the only reason I need the recruitment discussion to come after is because there's a association of City Managers that's willing to do the search for us for free based on our population size, and that saves the city like sixty thousand dollars.
That's right, but we're not on that topic yet.
You're right. We just, because we switched it, and that's why. That's why. That's the only, that's why we had to do this first. So we need to amend the.
There's a motion on the floor, hasn't been seconded. Does it die?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm, I'll move that we amend the Infomark agreement by inserting the term interim in front of City Manager in effective September twenty-seventh.
Yeah. Yes, I think that's correct.
Ken, when's your last day?
Twenty-six.
Okay.
But is.
Sir, is it interim or acting?
Is there a difference?
Yes. He needs to put it in.
I don't think so, but you do.
I'm okay with acting.
So, okay.
So that's the wording that's correct, right?
So we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Now, don't we? Now do we need to also inform Infomark of the intent to carve out the City Manager role from their contract? Because that's not what that was. Well, that was just our option to elevate.
We don't have to carve out City Manager. He's leaving.
No, I mean the City Manager role.
Exactly.
That's amending, that's amending the contract.
Right. Okay.
No, no.
Wait a minute. No.
No.
Respectfully, I disagree.
I, I didn't think so either.
Taking the term manager and make it acting. You still will have the responsibility of Infomark to give you a City Manager.
Right. So what motion needs to happen in order to, we're all in a consensus. We want to carve out the City Manager role. We no longer want it to be Infomark af, after we conduct a robust search for a permanent City Manager. Please dictate the motion that we would need to make that.
Once we find a person.
Correct.
Once we find the.
Okay, so that motion doesn't need to be today.
Correct.
Do we need to make a motion for interim?
I'd like to make a que, ask a question.
Sure.
And this would be going back to our last week's conversation. With the gap in the timeframe and institutional knowledge, I would like to make a motion to make Zoe Burgess our, our current City Clerk be acting City Manager until we find an interim. We don't, whether it's a firm that we hired or do that, whether, and whether, until we find our permanent City Manager. But Zoe Burgess would be the acting until, as the holdover, whether that's two months, four months, until we find, six months, until we actually hire a firm. You know, FCCMA, their services, they're all current managers, retired managers, and they're willing to do it for free for us.
Well, what are we talking about here? Are we talking about item E?
Well, now would be finding an acting.
Yeah, we move.
You do not need to make that motion now. Infomark could be responsible for bringing Ms. Burgess to you as the acting.
But I want to guarantee that it's Ms. Burgess.
I think you've made it very clear that's the direction like they have.
Trust me, the President of Management Services got the message loud and clear last week. And from the discussion tonight, he'll be talking to Zoe tomorrow, telling her that she's going to be acting City Manager for Westlake.
I'm good with that.
So we don't have to.
They're on. I believe Chris and Emma are online as well.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Well, they, they will recommend. That was my understanding, and we would have to approve it.
They are responsible for providing you a district manager or a city manager or an assistant city manager, an acting city manager, as part of their contract.
May I ask how we're gonna approve it if we're not having another meeting?
We schedule another meeting.
Until after the appointment?
Before the twenty-sixth.
Do you have a budget? Well, you can't do it.
No.
Do you have a budget, you have a budget meeting on the eleventh that you could add to that agenda?
Yeah, we have a meeting on the eleventh. That's right.
Why, why don't we amend the contract specifically naming Zoe Burgess as acting? Can we do that?
It's not what the contract says.
The present contract doesn't identify Mr. Castle as the City Manager.
Actually, it does. Actually, it does. Yeah.
Mayor, maybe the amendment. I received, and I'm assuming the other members of the council received two other resumes from Infomark. Wouldn't it be appropriate to at least look at those resumes? Maybe, maybe interviewing Ms. Burgess and those other candidates?
It would be appropriate to consider those resumes possibly for the full-time role.
Well, no, they submitted them for the interim role.
No, we submitted, we submitted them as what we were looking at in the meantime. But after the last meeting, when you all said you did not want anybody from Infomark as the interim or permanent, those were dropped. They were sent to you as a couple of the individuals that we were initially interviewing in preliminary discussions with about potentially an interim position. Since you said you did not want Infomark to be doing that portion of it last week, the direction was to go forward with an acting and go outside of Infomark's resources to find somebody.
Do we have council consensus that it should be Zoe as acting? I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement.
Just for the record, I reviewed Zoe's resume. I probably asked for a copy of it. I don't know if you all, all got it.
We did.
And I let her know that in my review of her, her resume, she's got very good credentials and a good background. I think it's, I just felt it important for this council to establish the proper form and procedure and do it in a measured way so that we appear to be objective to the community. I am totally in support of Zoe being interim, acting, whatever you want to call it, because she has the institutional knowledge, she has background. But I just felt it appropriate that we go through the process and not.
I don't think we should even consider bringing in an outsider, especially when we're all in consensus.
We should be finding.
It should be Zoe. We can focus our energy on hiring our permanent.
I understand now. I'm saying, I'm totally in support of Zoe. But before, before Mr. Castle said those two additional resumes were submitted, I took them as being submitted for an interim. And I'm hearing now that they withdrew them, I guess. It was just an exercise that I thought would be valuable, because we are going to be looking for a permanent City Manager.
I don't think we need to wait for time, for any more of ours. I think we need, all are in consensus with who's gonna be our acting. I only need to know, how do we, how do we do that so that we don't have to call a special meeting?
Put it on the eleventh.
It's, it's too late. It's eleven days without it.
No, it's here until the twenty-sixth. We meet again on the eleventh of September for the final budget hearing.
Wait, what's the difference between the eleventh? Because it needs to be an agenda item? Is that the case?
Yes, sir.
Can it be done during the budget meeting?
We call a special meeting and add it to that agenda.
Immediately after the eleventh. Okay, can we do that?
I'm fine with that.
And doing it now would not be appropriate because it's not on the agenda.
There's no action on your agenda.
Got it. Okay, so let's do that. Let's agree consensus for scheduling a special meeting immediately after the budget hearing? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Excellent. So now we're discussing the recruitment firm for the position of City Manager. I am elated to hear that the FCCMA has a free service that will save the city
And they'll do all the sorting. If we want five, we want ten, they'll bring them back to the, so here's your.
On helping us in the search. Just for the sake of the public, Mr. City Manager, can you explain what the FCCMA is?
Yes, the Florida City County Managers Association is a professional association made up of all the city, uh, city and county managers within the state of Florida. They're also part of the International City Managers Association, which their fundamental purpose is for professional management of governments by certified and qualified professionals. They hold a very high standard of ethics for all of their members, and they vehemently support and protect the council manager form of government. They have what they call special, our senior advisors, they used to be called range riders of retired managers that are available to various municipalities for short-term projects, for all kinds of things, depending on what the individual municipality is looking for, to help them out through the situations. One of the things they do offer, they have a coordinator, I think it's Ken, Ken Parker, I think is his name. He is the coordinator for senior advisors. I would recommend we reach out to him and see what's he actually provides in the senior advisor program, whether they will do the entire search or whether they will manage the search for you. I do not have that information at this point in time, but I would suggest that we reach out to them. Bring them on board, because even if they don't do the entire search, they can manage it as a independent third party taking the burden off, off the council and off of staff to do the search and to make sure the search is done properly to find you the correct manager.
Do you think it would be at all possible for them to come talk to us at this special meeting?
I can reach out to them tomorrow and see if they can have somebody here.
And do we need discussion? I think it's a phenomenal idea.
Yeah, I totally agree. I'll make a motion if you like.
You don't need a motion. You could just.
Consensus.
To direct City Manager to contact FCCMA for the purpose of recruiting a City Manager.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Wanted to bring one thing up. This is for legal, but also City Clerk. Next, on the eleventh, we have the six o'clock budget hearings. At six thirty, it's already been posted, and the agenda's already been sent out. Six thirty is Education Advisory Board meeting. So I don't know about doing this. about doing the special.
He calls special meeting at five thirty.
Okay. I just wanted to make that announcement out there because we already have a set meeting, it's already been proposed, it's already been out.
So special meeting will be just before the budget hearing?
Five, five thirty.
That thirty should be fine.
Five thirty should be fine.
Will that give enough time for a quick presentation if?
It should.
No proclamations. Um, all right, very good. And lastly, we have, uh, council comments. Councilwoman.
It's been a long day. It's, it's a good meeting and good night. Thank you all for coming.
Councilman Gleason.
I echo that.
Councilman Werner.
I agree, I have too much already to say.
Yeah.
I'm good with this.
Uh, thank you all. Appreciate all the leadership from my colleagues today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. You're a trooper.
You have public.
You're a trooper.
You have public comments, sir.
Public comments.
Sorry, just kidding. Staff reports? I didn't, I didn't bang the gavel yet, we're not adjourned. Staff reports?
You look like you were.
Mr. Attorney?
No?
I have nothing to add tonight.
No? All right, we already did the other ones. And, uh, public comment, this city, this section of the agenda allows for public comments from the public speaker. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should have been completed and returned to the city. When you're called to speak, please go to the podium and try to present. The council, state your name and address for the record. Madam Clerk.
You have a public comment card from Ms. Anita Kaplan.
Kaplan? You have exactly three minutes? You can condense that down to a minute and a half.
Anita Kaplan, five, four, five, nine, Santa Rosa Lane, Westlake. Um, I'm, thank you for the time, the council, mayor, vice mayor. Um, I'm pretty passionate what I'm going to talk about and don't think you're going to be surprised, but um, that I entitled this whole discussion that I'm, uh, trying to engage you in is, what do we do without Zoe? So it's kind of like, what do we do without Maria, I guess? I'm, I'm concerned because we've been gaining a lot of traction on the Educational Advisory Board. I mean, it even took a while for us to get a full boat of people on the committee. But because of the sunshine laws and because we're a collaborative committee and we do activities together, I can't talk to them. I have to go through Zoe or Odette or maybe now sometimes on other people to reach out to the members and talk with them about what's, what's up or what they have questions about. Give me an example, now we're going out to the restaurants to see if they will support us in terms of funding on a fundraising night where we get a percentage of that. And I'm sure something's going to come up. And sometimes people forget and they email me and I have to redirect them. It's nice that, um, there's consensus for Zoe. I'm a little bit anxious because she's been really helpful to me. But, um, keep in mind now, if she's going to be doing the sitting manager's job, who's going to be doing her job? I don't hear anybody talking about that.
That staff.
Well, but understand, we had three staff members even before all this talk began. So at that time it was necessary or deemed necessary that we needed these extra people, not just because of what's going on now, because we hadn't even talked about it, but because these other people already have jobs to do too. So there's a little bit of a domino effect here. Um, I don't think.
I let Zoe respond.
I think the city manager wants to say.
Well, I let Ken respond.
Thank you. Well, to speak to what you said about the traction you've gained, to that traction actually has occurred since Odette has been here. Um, Odette has been a phenomenal employee that has started and she's really the one that has gotten everything moving with the board. She's the one that's been taking control of, uh, the agendas and making sure they've gotten out and ensuring that the communication is met with the advisory board as well as the school districts board. So I'm fully confident that Odette can take on the responsibilities of the advisory board as I was going to step aside from being, even being part of those meetings, um, so that Odette could, could take, you know, firsthand. And then we hired Nicole on, who eventually I see her having the education background would take responsibility of that board.
So who's going to take responsibility now for the job that you have now before you become the interim or acting council member?
It would be Odette. Odette is considered the deputy city clerk. She's my right hand, as Nicole is my left.
So now Odette is going to be the city clerk and somebody that works with the Educational Advisory Board. That's a big load.
It was Zoe.
At one time, it was always just me.
Well, yeah, I know. I mean, we're going to have some residual monies, right? From this, maybe we should pick up somebody part-time.
If I may also.
It's kind of interesting to me that this is a female thing going on here. It's sort of like, let's say we said to one of you, well, the mayor's going to be out, so, you know, can somebody on the council kind of take over for it? But wouldn't the council member say, well, who's going to do my job?
If I may also add, um, I have discussed with Infomark and they've offered any resource that I've, I can request from them. So they've offered a great deal of support and I'm, I'm confident that any additional needs for staff, they will be able to provide to us.
Would feel a lot better if I know that we could pick up somebody sometime because I really think it puts a lot of pressure on the new people who really didn't think they were going to have these additional jobs when they were hired.
Mr. Mayor, Kaplan, I appreciate your passion. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Zoe's calling.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, let me, I have one more question though. It's about planning and zoning. What kind of zoning are we talking about? Because we've been talking about zoning schools on the Educational Advisory Board and what the borders are for those schools. Is this different zoning? What's the difference zoning?
Just, uh, just for the, the purpose of the clock, I'll have staff get back to you on that.
All right.
They'll email it to you, but it's all P and Z.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment to address, uh, part of Mrs. Kaplan's concerns. One of the advantages of doing a contract for services is the contract is to provide X services, whatever that is delineated. The vendor is required to provide those services regardless of whether it's one person or ten people. They have backup, we have enough extra personnel that we can assign temporarily to handle issues and stuff should Zoe need any resources additional to what she has in Odette. And, and I'm sorry, I keep forgetting your name. Nicole. And I talk to you every day. Sorry, Nicole. But, um, and I'll remind the council that back in May of twenty-three, I was out for six weeks recovering from heart surgery. Okay? The city didn't crash. Everything ran. Because it's not dependent upon me. It's dependent upon the team and the staff that I have working with me. They make it happen in all the various areas on a day-to-day basis. I have total confidence that with Zoe as acting and the team of professionals that are servicing Westlake, the city will not miss a beat. It will go on. Plats will come in, they'll be approved, buildings will get built, inspections will happen, roads will get built. It's going to continue to happen because that's the way we set it up so that it runs basically by itself. It will run almost on automatic with a little bit of monitoring and tweaking as it goes down the tube. Because everybody knows their job and everybody does their job.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Do we have more public comment?
We have additional public comment card from Mr. Bobby Farber.
Bobby Farber, forty-eight, twenty-nine, St. Almond's Way. In answer to your question, they're not here to tell me what their protocol, but when they turn those garbage bins over, the tall blue ones and the yellow one, so that when you look out your window, you don't go, oh, did they pick it up? They're letting you know that it's been picked up. So now you can go out there, pick it up, open your garage and put it in. So remember that one. Next one is, I believe, Ms. Leonard brought up about the remembrance. Um, was it you for, uh, nine eleven? Uh, with the proclamation? You? This Friday, I have already started a nine eleven remembrance first responder group here in Westlake. And we're going to have our first meeting at six thirty, probably right in this room. You get to know everybody. We've got, you know, X amount coming. It's the twenty-fifth anniversary of the nine eleven attacks next year. It will be my goal and along with help from the council, um, that we get something together here where we could have a ceremony like some of the other cities or villages. Maybe we could put a five K race or something together, whatever it might be, but let's get on the map with that. So I'm going to try and do what I can, get there with a little extra help and maybe some funding.